Welcome to the Larkspur Planning Commission meeting of June 25. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Hope?
Here.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Here.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Here.
And Commissioner Swisher is absent, so you have a quorum.
Thank you. So to start with, do we have any public comments on matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we can move on. Can we please have the director's report?
The city council heard the appeal of the 300 Alexander project last week, and they did uphold your decision. And no changes were made. We had recommended some changes, I think, regarding the tree. Oh, they're going to remove the tree because the arborist indicated that it wasn't going to survive the construction and had other issues with it. I think that's it. That's all I have to report. We haven't had, we don't have any comments back from the state on the housing element yet, although they emailed me this morning with a question, so I'm hoping they'll be coming soon.
Thank you very much. So we'll open the public portion of the meeting tonight. We have three items on the agenda. And the first one is 444 William. If we could please have the direct, the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Chalmers, and good evening, commissioners. So this evening, I am presenting a project at 444 William Avenue in the R1 zoning district in the Heather Gardens neighborhood. Eric Rogers, the architect, on behalf of the property owner, Michael Ferris, is requesting approval of design review as required in conjunction with discretionary permits, a variance to the front yard setback, and a variance for, to allow for only one off-street parking space on the site where four are required by code. The front yard setback will increase the exterior wall height located in the required front yard and will allow a new covered front entryway to encroach further into the required front yard setback, creating a nine-foot, eight-inch setback where 20 feet is required by code and where the present house has a 15-foot setback. I forgot to advance my slide. This is everything I just talked about. So here you can see the subject property in the Heather Gardens neighborhood. It is facing William Avenue and facing the bike path. As you can see, there is public right-of-way on either side of Williams Avenue that is used for on-street parking. And you can see that this is a flat rectilinear lot similar to most of the lots in Heather Gardens. It is substandard in its width and its size. And it is generally the same size and shape as the parcels that are surrounding it. The existing structure dates to 1941. It is a single-family residence. That's 1,093 square foot, one-story with three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and no garage. There is no record that the garage was converted. However, many garages in, in the neighborhood and on William Ave particularly were converted. I did find a 1985 staff report for a garage that was converted into a floor area. And in that staff report, they cited 11 other homes in the immediate vicinity that already had conversions. So those likely were happening before it was required to come in for a discretionary permit. It is possible that the home is built without a garage, but more likely that it was at some point converted to floor area. There's 120-square-foot accessory structure in the rear yard. It does meet the zoning regulations. It will require after-the-fact mechanical permits that will be handled at the building permit stage if the project is approved. If it's not, that's something that the building department and code enforcement will likely take on. So the existing residence is a non-conforming 14-foot, 10-inch front yard setback. This is a really common condition in the Heather Gardens neighborhood. The original subdivision was recorded with a 15-foot front yard setback for many parcels in Heather Gardens. However, that wasn't adopted by an ordinance. So it, our 20-foot R1 setback is the requirement for this neighborhood. But we do see many of the homes with these reduced front yard setbacks. As we discussed, the existing residence does not meet the current parking requirements as it only, only provides one off-street space in the driveway where four spaces would be required by code with this proposal. Because the project exceeds the 60% replacement value of the existing structure, it would be required by our code to come into conformance with the current parking regulations. One covered parking spa, one covered off-street parking space, one uncovered off-street parking space, and two guest parking spaces. Because of the width of William Ave, it's, and the width of the parcel, they cannot propose a dedicated guest parking street on, on William Avenue like we can sometimes do with other parcels that are larger. Otherwise, the existing residence meets the standard regulations of the R1 district, including the side and rear yard setbacks, lot coverage, floor area ratio, and height limits. And the applicants are requesting the first major planning entitlements to date. So the applicant is proposing to partially demolish and reconstruct the existing residence and construct a 625-square-foot, single-story addition at the rear of the residence. This would accommodate a more modern layout inside of the home as well as an additional primary bedroom suite. The finished floor would be raised by approximately 21 inches to comply with the floodplain regulations as this parcel is in the FEMA Special Flood Hazard District AE. So the overall height of the residence would increase by approximately three feet with a finished height of 19 feet and 5 inches, where maximum is 30 as required by code. I will note that the elevations on the plan set are using the NAV-88 datum, which is the standard datum when we're talking about homes in floodplain areas. However, I did verify that the finished height from the finished grade is 19 feet and 5 inches in the Blue Beam Review software. And I, and I also went and inspected the story poles, which have been up for a little over a week now. So the existing, the, the project would exacerbate the existing non-conformity as it's proposing to raise the wall heights of this front elevation within the front yard setback and then also this newly configured front entryway, which I think it's easier to see what's going to change here, is going to come out into the front yard. The code does allow for covered front entryways to encroach into required front yard setbacks. However, because this is already, the home itself is within the front yard setback, that portion of the code doesn't really apply to this specific project. But I do feel that the intent of the code is still being met as they're not proposing to move the floor area of the home any further into the front yard setback. It's just this front entryway. The proposal does include a new roof and all-new exterior materials. New window openings are minimal, would not affect privacy of the neighbors. And the window openings at the front elevation are generally staying the same. So this is the westerly elevation. And the easterly elevation, the plan set did have two sets of west and south elevation. So here, I've just corrected that. So this is the easterly elevation. This is the side of the house that's facing 250 Williams Avenue, which is the, the corner home. And then the north elevation, this is what you would see from the rear. I'm just going to go back to the site plan. I do want to point out that there is a heritage tree in the rear yard. And some of the work being proposed for this addition at the rear is within the drip line of that heritage tree. So staff has included a condition of approval that they will have a tree protection plan submitted that's prepared by a qualified arborist. And that can be submitted with the building permit. And they'll need to show that they've got all of the tree protection measures in place before planning will sign off on, on that. As they're not proposing any serious grading or anything, and it is minimally within that drip line, we feel that it's fine to include that as a condition of approval rather than having it right now. So I went ahead and included some images of nearby homes on William Avenue. This just is to give you an idea of the, the street itself. It's, none of these homes have the required parking. And as you can see, many of them don't even have the garage. 418, this is a home that had a major remodel and a second-story addition. They received a parking variance to maintain this non-conforming parking. 410 William, this is a home that many years ago got a variance to convert their garage. The same thing is true at 44 William and for, at 440 William and 430 William. And what you see here is most of them have one parking space on the site. And then they're using the, the shared on-street parking. And then these images I'm including just to show that there have been other proposals that have come forward that have had major remodels and additions. And the homes were not required to meet a 20-foot front yard setback. 432 William maintained a, this, this one's really notable here because this was a complete demo and rebuild. And it was rebuilt with a 15-foot front yard setback, as well as being two stories and also having non-conforming parking. And that's just right down the street from 444 William. The same is true for 432 William. This was approved without a variance. This was in the early 2000s. A survey was not required at that time. But looking at the site plan, you can see that they, even though on their plans, they said they have a 20-foot setback, they're not actually measuring it from the property line. They're measuring it from the edge of the curb. So it's 432 William, looking at the satellite images. I can see that this one also maintained about a 15-foot front yard setback. 422 William got a variance to further encroach into the front yard setback. And that is, let's see, I'm doing it right? I'm just going to use my mouse. This one in the upper left, so they received a variance to build these bay windows and to also put on a new gable roof here, which further encroached into the required front yard setback. They also received a variance to maintain their non-conforming parking. And the same is true for 450 William, even though this home does have a detached garage around the corner facing Diane, it's also not providing the parking requirements. Which, as a side note, may be something that we want to discuss in the future if Heather Gardens should maybe have a zoning M M N or some kind of overlay because we're very, very rarely having any projects come in where we're getting all four parking spaces on these tiny lots in the, in the Heather Gardens neighborhood. Something I will discuss is, you know, looking at the scope of work, the applicants have proposed to only partially demolish the home. And the proposal is to, is currently showing that they would not demolish this front-facing exterior wall. However, we can see that they are going to be doing foundation work. They are going to be putting a new roof on. They're making some significant changes. And when remodels come in for some of these older homes, we often see revisions that come through at the building permit stage where they're requesting to do more demolition than they had expected to do at the, at the planning stage where we're really just looking at the architecturals and not the structural. So there is a possibility that this will be more akin to a full demo and rebuild. However, staff is supportive of the project. And if that does end up being the case, we would still support the project as it is proposed if a building permit plan set were to come in showing more demolition than we're seeing on the architecturals today.
Jackie, can I ask a quick question on that?
Yeah.
One note, can you just clarify for the commission what we have to do? If there's anything different that we have to do with respect to a rebuild as to a remodel? And in the event that they do demolish further than what's in the plans right now, can you just confirm that the applicant would have to come back to the city for any additional permits?
Sure. So typically, when we have something that is considered a new house, if it's being demolished to a point where we're saying, okay, this is not, the existing structure is not remaining in any, in any real way, and we're looking at a new structure, we would want the new structure to meet the code requirements as much as possible. As you know, we aren't typically giving out variances, especially for setbacks for new homes. In this case, we're supportive of the variance for the front yard setback, even if it were a new home. Because all of the homes down Williams Avenue do have that 15-foot front yard setback, it would, one, I'd be odd to require it for this home when we haven't required it for other new homes on Williams Avenue. And then also in our single-family design guidelines, we have a standard where we're asking people to maintain similar setbacks so we don't have a streetscape where some homes are forward and some homes are back. We like to see standardized setbacks as, as much as possible. So it would almost be a bit strange if this one were to suddenly be setback further. Additionally, there is the heritage tree in the back, which could be further impacted if the home was required to be moved back. Maybe not by much because they're not trenching or digging down so deep, but without a full arborist reported, it's difficult to know. They would not be, we wouldn't be including a condition of approval that they would need to come back for any further approvals if they need to do demo. I think you should all just discuss it, you know, first as it's proposed today. But are you also okay with something that is possibly a bigger project in terms of demolition and, and approving that with the setbacks that are shown? But no, they wouldn't need to come back for additional approvals.
But they would go back to the city and not the commission? I'm just talking about they'd come back to the building department for further permits if there was going to be additional demo than what's being proposed right now?
Right. Their demolition permit will have to show everything that they're doing. So sometimes people will come in for a demolition permit, and it'll look very similar to the architecturals that we see at the planning permit stage. When they get in there and start taking out the walls and opening things up, frequently we see revisions come in where they're asking for additional demolition. Contractors find all kinds of things when they start these projects, dry rot. And it's a very, it's an old home, it's 1941. So I think it's safe, safe to assume that there may be more demolition than we see on these plans. But the building, the building department will be receiving those permits, and the planners would be reviewing them and signing off on them.
Right. Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, absolutely. So staff's made the findings to approve the requested permits. The design is really, fits in well with the neighborhood. It's maintaining these, this nice kind of craftsman style with the gabled roofs. It is modernizing it a bit with exterior finishes. Overall, as far as the parking goes, this is not going to increase a parking burden as it exists today. This site is already only, has one off-street parking space. There's a plethora of parking on Williams Avenue available going both east and west. And that is all I have. I am available if you have any additional questions about that.
Thank you very much, Jackie, for that staff report. Do we have any questions for staff?
I only have the question about the demolition.
Okay, great. Can we hear from the applicant or their architect? Mr. Rogers, thank you. Do we have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I live in the neighborhood. 15-feet front yard setbacks are standard. It's, and I agree, we ought to probably try to address that at some future time because we do this every time. And I would only say one teeny-weeny thing is the site plan shows three risers going down and the, the elevation shows five risers going down. So the stairs is going to poke a little further into the front yard setback than is shown, which I don't care about particularly. So I think it'll be a really nice addition to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. In that case, do we have any public comment on this, on 444 William? Nothing? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Does anyone like to go first? Would you like to go first?
I have no comments. I, I think it's a very reasonable project for the size of the lot. And I saw the, the pictures that you had. Two are listed as 432 William, so I'm not sure which. But when I was driving through the neighborhood and checking out the houses, I was surprised at how big some of them were in comparison. So it seems very, very reasonable what they're asking for.
So you can make the findings?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I generally agree. I think the, the design looks nice. It seems consistent with the neighborhood in terms of the front yard setback. The part about raising the, the wall and the front yard setbacks, I think is a great idea for the flood hazard. And allowing the porch, I think it'll look nice. So, and then it seems like we're not going to be impacting the parking, but we need to address it as a part of this. But I don't see that being a, a great impact. And it seems consistent with what we've approved in the, in the neighborhood. So I think I can also make the findings.
Thank you very much, Brock.
All right, I, I can make the findings also, so that's pretty much what I have to say.
Well, this is pretty quick. So yeah, I, I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners. I'm in supportive of the, of the application. I can make the findings for the design review, the front yard setback variance and the, the parking variance. I think I agree with the, the discussion in the staff report. So I think we can just go to a vote. Or we need a motion? Does somebody want to make the motion?
I'll, I'll do it. I move to approve project PLN 24-06 at 444 William Avenue, subject to the conditions of approval.
Second?
Commissioner Hope?
I second.
Oh, yeah. You want to vote, and what's your vote?
I'm going to vote yes. It's a second.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And the motion carries 4-0 with one member absent.
And there's a 10-day?
Correct. There's a 10-day appeal period. So if anyone was interested in appealing, they should file a fee and the form with the city clerk within that 10-day period.
Great. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to the next item. Give them a minute. Okay, that's, where is mine? It's 84 Polhemus Way. PLN 2408. Could we please have the staff report?
Yes, give me just a moment here to get the right permissions to share my screen. All right. Sorry about the wait here. I'm going to have to email my slides over to Jackie. So give me two minutes here. All right, well, I, in the meantime, I'll just go ahead and start. And then if Jackie can get it thrown up on the screen, we'll, we'll get it started for you. So I apologize for the delay here. The project in front of you is PLN 2408 for 84 Polhemus Way. The project proposes an addition of a little over 1,500 square feet to the lower level of the existing house, which is built on stilts right now. So the idea is that the addition would just infill that, that space. 702 square feet of that 1,500-square-foot number are unconditioned under-story space. So they do meet the definition of floor area to be counted in that floor area ratio, but they're not going to be space for living. There's about 802 square feet, I think is how the math works out, of actual conditioned living space proposed directly beneath the main home. Perfect, thank you. And so you can kind of see that here. It's a little hard to read up on this screen, but all of this down here, this portion is going to be the unconditioned space. And then where these windows are, that's the conditioned space. One thing that I just do want to note, there is a portion of the unconditioned space on the bottom here that doesn't meet the seven-foot ceiling height definition of floor area. So technically, the addition is larger by a couple hundred square feet, but it doesn't count against the floor area of the structure. So this is the, just the site that we're talking about here. You can't really see it in yellow, but it's this kind of trapezoid shape here. And then there's a Google Maps view of it for you. Here is the site plan. One thing I just do want to note is that the existing house does have a couple of non-conformities with respect to setbacks. This front corner here is, I think it's almost 13 feet from the property line where the setback requirement is 20. And then along this side here, this is, I think, a foot closer to the property line than it should be, this rear corner. But everything that's proposed for the new addition meets the setback requirements. So it's not seeking to exacerbate any of the non-conformities on site. So here's the floor plan. Again, a little hard to read, I apologize. And then I'll just really quickly, this is the unconditioned under-story space up here at the top. This is the very lower level. And then if you were to draw a line that cut this, this floor plan basically right across the middle here, that's the space that doesn't meet the seven-foot ceiling height all in, all in here. So that's not counted in the floor area. And then I've got a couple elevations for you. These will be easier to see. So this is the elevation you would see if you were looking at it from Wilson Way. It's pretty far up the hill. I really doubt many people would be able to see that unless you're hiking up there and actively looking for it. And then these are the other three elevations. The one on the bottom is what you would see from Polhemus. Although you probably still, again, wouldn't see much just Although you probably still again wouldn't see much just because the home is kind of sitting beneath the crust of the hill there. Uh, and then this kind of makes it a little easier to see what I'm talking about. This side elevation here of it's in this corner where the ceiling height is not seven feet. So if you just took this all the way through the building, that's the portion I'm, I'm talking about. Uh, and in terms of floor area, did I put us, I just don't have it in there. So, um, the, the property, because of the slope, it's an eighty-seven percent slope. Uh, it's the highest slope in the neighborhood by quite a margin. The property hits the minimum floor area ratio allowed, that zero point zero five of the, the lot size. So they are proposing a floor area that would end up being zero point two, which is still point zero three beneath the floor area average of all the homes within three hundred feet. Uh, in terms of square footage, that's about a five hundred foot difference. So they're still, even with these additions, five hundred feet less, square feet less than the average in the neighborhood. That's all I've got for you. So staff recommends that the commission review, take public comment and approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval and a class one sequel exemption. I do want to note that one of the public works conditions, I think, references street names for the Tamil Pious project. Uh, so we may just want to, in your motion, if you do choose to approve, make note of correcting that to read, uh, Polhemus and Wilson Way rather than Tamil Pious. It's a condition about the road moratoriums entrenching on, on paved streets. So I'm available for any questions and the applicant and owner are here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex, for that staff report. Do we have, um, the applicant and their architect like to make a comment? Great, thank you. Thank you.
Hello, um, so David Maron, uh, my wife and I purchased the four Polhemus Way about five years ago. At the time, we didn't understand who was ever going to buy any of these five, six, seven bedroom houses in Marin. Cause we, we didn't understand how you need that much space. But then COVID happened, we both started working home. We've now had two kids, second one, two months ago, and we do not fit in the, uh, the house. But we love the neighborhood, wonderful neighborhoods like Phil and Lorraine who are here. And, um, yeah, we want to stay. So we want to make the house big enough for, I guess, what our family has become. And we think it's right in line with everything else in the neighborhood. So hopefully easy to do. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Clayton, I'm the architect. And I've worked with Alex early on when David and his wife first approached me. They said, hey, we got this great house, come on up and take a look. And I was, went on the deck and I was like, whoa. So it's a, it's a really steep lot. And, uh, the initial, uh, construction basically built a regular ranch home, but on stilts. And I'm sure you all went up there and take a look at it and agreed that it's a, it's a real cliffhanger. The obvious solution in this to fit their budget and the structural challenges that exist with this parcel and to, to build something that would accommodate their new family, it was pretty obvious that going down was the way to do it. We're going to be able to maintain the existing six by six posts that are there and infill underneath the existing residence. And Alex's point, uh, is that we're going to not exacerbate the existing non-conformities. They, they obviously didn't want to go any further down the hill where it's even steeper. So they built the house pretty tight to the front yard setback. So, but fortunately, this addition does not non-conform. It's conforms to the front yard and the setback, uh, the side yard. There was some questions about the FAR and the intent of that understory to the understory addition. So there's the main level, the understory that's going to be the new living space. And then under that is additional square footage that is over seven feet tall. There's no accommodations within the structure for the stairs to go down and then down again. We'd have to shift the stairs to get down. There's no intent by the owner to expand into that space, really. It probably would be reasonable storage, but it's so far down the hill, it's hard to get to. And they've got other storage. We've developed other storage at other locations on it. We discussed, you know, actually making the lower floor that we've added wider to accommodate more bedrooms, more space. And we decided not to because it, they just didn't need it and it didn't fit their budget. So we have, the owner has no intention of developing that lower space. It's just a, um, it's a feature of bringing the sheer walls all the way down to the existing foundation. On that note, we have Dave Olness, who's the soils engineer. And early concern was, hey, can we put in piers without too much impact to the structure, uh, that's existing and put in a, an appropriate structural solution? And fortunately, the, uh, hard rock is about four to five feet below the existing soil conditions there. So it's a steep enough spot that most of the top soil had eroded off over the years. So rocks fairly close. Therefore, the piers that we have to drill can actually be hand dug. We don't have to actually bring equipment down there. We can use, um, local and or hand carried equipment. And so they don't have to be super deep. There's not going to be a lot of off-haul. There, the each pier, uh, is, is eighteen inch in diameter and they'll probably go around eight to ten feet max. So we won't, will not have a lot of, uh, of off-haul, which we can actually accommodate on the site. We've worked with, uh, DPW on this. We also have a, a civil engineer that's helping us with the drainage. The existing drainage goes, is captured now and carried all the way down to lower street. So we, we addressed all these early sort of physical engineering challenges early on, just to make sure that this is an appropriate solution. Hopefully, the, the planning solution is, I mean, the, the worry that there's additional square footage underneath there is, is not, um, too big of a deal. It's not intended for usage in that regard. So other than that, um, I can take any questions.
Do we have any questions?
Um, I had one just out of curiosity. Are you running grade beams between the, the piers?
Yes, there are. And we're, we're running grade beams underneath the existing entire footprint of the building. And it's actually larger than the addition below, which is set in, primarily because the original piers were actually spot footings. They're dug down about four feet. And so we're, we're stabilizing those as well. Fortunately, there really was very little movement, if at all. There's no rolling of the posts. They, they put in some metal sort of light gauge brackets between them. And they seem to have done the job well, but we're going to put in a grade beam, truly grade beam. We're not actually digging them into the ground. They're just going to be at grade and tie the existing piers and then put additional piers between those.
You know, I had just one clarification. The, I guess that kind of sheer wall that's on the outside, it's going all the way down to the ground level. So the siding of that, is that this, um, this trim that's like slight, like, uh, sorry, I'm not an architect, I'm butchering this completely.
Well, no, I, I, I'm going to preemptive your question, actually. On this, the, the downslope elevation, I looked at my plans and I didn't actually show the siding all the way down. That is the intent, actually. So, um, if, if you bring up that elevation again, again, basically it will be horizontal siding. It will go all the way down to the grade or the grade beams and all, on all sides.
And that's this booth ray blue. That's, that's the, that's what I'm looking at the correct material.
Darker gray, blue, yeah, that sort of goes away.
And that's what you see. So if someone's looking up from Wilson Way, that's what they see is the, this, that siding all the way down.
Correct. And the intent is some, a darker color. If you, if you say, hey, it's not dark enough. I, I don't think the applicant has a big concern. It just wants to be something that kind of goes away, um, and is dark enough and sort of fits the color of the forest in that area is kind of the goal.
Yeah, no, I think that works.
Okay.
This, this, this color. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that's what we were, that's what was happening.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I didn't have any questions, did, um, any more questions? And I realized I didn't give anyone an opportunity to ask questions of staff. I don't know if anyone, we just jumped right into the applicant.
I guess as a civil engineer, I'm glad to see that you have a soils engineer on board. Cause for that side, it's particularly important.
Yeah, that was a, that's a very steep slope you're working with. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, when he comes up, yeah.
Do we have any public comment? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm, uh, Phil Bickler. I am, I have lived, uh, at ninety-one Polhemus Way for about thirty-three years now. And I remember David Ratner, who was on your commission for a while before he passed away. Um, I'm very supportive of this project. I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood. And I'm saying that from a couple of perspectives. One, it'll bring the house into a condition which is more similar to the rest of the properties up there. Their house is now sort of the outlier because it's up on stilts. All the other homes in the neighborhood go down to the grade. So that's a positive thing. I think architecturally, it looks great. So I support that. The other thing is, uh, we all worry about fire in that neighborhood. And as their home exists now, the entire underside of the house, which is wood, is exposed to potential fire. And if this is built down, it's going to potentially be more fire resistant. So I think that's a positive for the neighborhood as well. And I, I heard the, the discussion about the soils. It is a very steep slope. In the thirty-three years that I've lived there, that slope in that, those can soil conditions up there are exceptionally stable. And I think the reason that's the case is it's so porous. So instead of having a lot of runoff, the substrate up there, the soils are like a giant sponge. The water goes through rather than run over. So I, I know how important it is to have soil engineers on such a steep slope. But I would, I would add that there's a lot of stability. And I've noticed the piers on your house and they're same condition that they were in thirty years ago. So just small bit of non-professional input there. So strongly supportive, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have any additional comment?
Hi, I'm Lorraine Zuckam and we live at forty-four, about two doors down. And my husband and I have lived there for almost forty-some years. And so we are thrilled to have them, first off, as neighbors. And secondly, to have the improvements done on their property. We're thrilled about, I won't go into anything more than Phil said, because I agree completely with that. And we have two other neighbors that are not here and they also support this. And I, they asked me to represent them. So the big thing is the fire as well. Couldn't be happier to have it spilled to the ground. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just add, it's great to see people come in person rather than just sign a pre-printed document. I must say, this is really lovely to see, um, neighbors come in person and make their support comments. Um, anyone else? Okay, in that case, let's bring it back to the commission for discussion. Brock, would you like to go first?
I, I'm, uh, totally in favor of the project. I think it's a obvious thing to do with the house. It's basically, it's not free square footage, but it's, um, usable square footage and it'll be, uh, it'll be better that way.
Right, thank you. Just go down the line.
Sure, uh, yeah, I, I, I agree. Seems like, uh, you know, putting some sheer walls on that would be a good idea. I think it looks great. The, in terms of the, uh, design review, yeah, I think it looks great. Or area ratio exception, um, we, we see a lot of these on hillsides, uh, lots because of how our zoning code is set up. Where I don't think zero point zero five is, uh, particularly enforced. So, and zero point two seems reasonable. It's in line with the rest of the neighborhood. So I'm, I can make the findings for that exception.
I also agree with my commissioner said it's a, it looks like a very good project and I have no issues with it. I would make the findings.
Thank you, and I, I'm in the same boat. So I can make the findings for the, um, at a design review and also for the FAR exceptions for exact reasons that Liam just described. It's such a steep hillside. So, um, I think we can go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, I'll move approval of project PLN twenty-four oh eight, including the floor area, uh, ratio exception in design review.
Do we have to, subject to the cur, street name correction, right?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Yeah, the street name and the conditions.
Yeah, it would be.
That was just a typo, right?
It's public works condition number two. They, it's, it reads Tamil Pious Avenue.
It's just a.
It's just a typo.
Typo, yeah. All right. And you need that in the motion?
It's just a reminder.
I'll just add it to the motion. Move to approve based on the findings and conditions in the staff report, but correcting the address.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm adding that.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we'll take a vote.
Commissioner Hull? Sorry, I think I'm thinking of my friend whose last name is Toll. Commissioner Hull?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
The motion carries four, one, or four, zero with, uh, Commissioner Swisher absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job. That's a killer dog. If we turned it down, he was gonna.
All right, so for our final item on the, um, public portion of our agenda tonight is, uh, thirty Tamil Pious Avenue. Could we, um, and this is project number twenty-three thirty-nine, if we could please have the staff report. And it seems like your.
Yes, I have corrected my technical issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so yes, good evening again. Uh, the item before you is PLN twenty-three thirty-nine, uh, for thirty Tamil Pious Avenue. Uh, they're seeking a design review entitlement. Uh, the project proposes an addition of a hundred and forty square feet to the first floor of the home and ninety square feet to the second level of the home. It's already a two level home. Uh, you can sort of see them on the, the, the hundred and forty square feet is going to be behind the garage. So you're not really going to be able to see it from the street. Uh, and then the ninety square foot portion is, uh, overhanging, for lack of a better term, the garage. It'll be on top of the garage. Uh, they're also going to enclose a little patio area here and enclose a, a tree around, um, some nice patio area. And here are just a couple maps so you can get, uh, get your, your bearings here. It's pretty much directly west of where we are right now. And here's a site plan. So this, where I'm highlighting, and I'm sure you can't really see it. This is the rear addition in the back here. Uh, right in front of it is the garage. And then just right here is the second story addition. And some more elevations for you. And so this one, you might have, uh, noticed in the staff report, there's a, a bit of an interesting history to this particular property. In the eighties, nineteen eighty-two, uh, there was an agreement and a lot line adjustment process between the owners of fourteen Tamil Pious, which is the property immediately south of thirty Tamil Pious and the previous owners of thirty Tamil Pious. And that lot line adjustment gave twenty-six hundred square feet approximately from fourteen Tamil Pious to thirty Tamil Pious. Uh, it was approved by the city and it was conditioned that the lots, the lot line adjustment, you know, happened as it was approved and that no new lots would be created, uh, as a result of that action. The history is a little unclear, but as things stand today, it is its own, that, that twenty-six hundred square feet is its own lot at this point. You can kind of see it here. This is the thirty Tamil Pious lot up here. This is fourteen down here. And then this little bit in the middle was that lot in question. Uh, the lot is developed with a swimming pool and associated flat work. There's no structures, uh, there. So the owners, uh, when they, or the applicant, when they applied, I guess I'll back up here. This, the, this scope of work that they're proposing would normally be eligible for approval by the zoning administrator, which would be a member of staff here rather than the planning commission. Uh, however, staff informed the applicants when they applied that if they did want to go through the zoning administrator route, one of the conditions of approval would be to formally merge these two lots into one parcel rather than keeping them separate. Uh, staff did offer them the option, though, of coming to the planning commission and maybe seeing if the commission didn't feel that that was necessary, uh, which is what they have elected to do. So, uh, that's why we're here, even though the scope of work is much reduced from some of the projects that you normally see. So staff's recommendation would be to approve the project as it's designed with, uh, subject to findings and conditions of approval. There is a condition of approval written in there currently about formally merging the lot. So you would need to make it a part of your motion if you wanted to remove that. In terms of like pros and cons to, to merging the lot, I think from our perspective, from staff's perspective, the, the pro is just, uh, sort of rectifying a, an issue that occurred in the past. Again, when it's not really clear. Again, it's not really clear why it resulted being, you know, in the condition it's in today rather than just two lots rather than three. Uh, but the owner can, I'm sure, give us their, their reasoning for, for wanting it to, to remain separate. So that, uh, that concludes my staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions you have and the, the owner and their architect are here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. Do we have any questions for staff?
I would just like to mention that it's, it was probably just a recording error, that it just wasn't recorded with the right wording at the time. And so it ended up, the assessor's parcel, assessor mapping department did what probably was in the documents, which was, it appeared as two lots and it wasn't merged. It was in somewhere along the lines, it just wasn't recorded properly. So I think technically it's, city wouldn't consider it a lot.
Great. Thank you.
And it happens in my planning role, I've seen it happen a lot.
Yeah. And, and thank you for addressing that as well, Alex, so, um. So could we hear from the applicant or the architect? Um, and maybe you could also address this question about the, um, the two lots as well and thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mohamed Sadria and I'm the architect on this project. And as you can see, this, uh, project is rather a modest project. It's just a laundry room and a closet. And, uh, as you can also see on the, uh, conditions of approval, appropriately, there is quite a robust, uh, uh, laundry list of things that need to be included in the, uh, plans, uh, which are, uh, were, which are significant in cost and which we're glad to do. Uh, the, um, issue of the lotline merger got a little tricky because the surveyor that we were using went out of business. And the applicant approached, uh, civil engineering firm Stubberstroll and, uh, got a verbal estimate of close to twenty thousand dollars to do this lot merger. And, uh, as you can imagine, for a small, modest project, uh, it seemed a little, uh, out of line. And especially since it doesn't really benefit them. I don't think it benefits the city or the public or anyone else. Uh, so we would respectfully like to ask, uh, the commission to see if we can waive that requirement.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? For the architect? Although I have a question for staff, which is, do we need a survey?
So it, it should be just a, a written text document that explains that the two lots are merged pursuant to the prior approval. I don't think they should need to do any surveying documents to perfect the lot merger.
Well, it sounds like this is a conversation between you and the architect about how to get this done without incurring twenty thousand dollars, which I fully understand, we, we didn't understand why.
A normal lotline adjustment probably would cost that much based on our process. But the, because this was already approved long ago, it's just a matter of, um, correcting the record that's recorded and it should just be the cost of recording the documents so we could prepare them.
Right, so how best?
Well, we did talk to a professional about this and they looked into this. And again, I would reiterate, who does it really benefit to go through this potentially very costly process?
Well, it sounds like it may not cost as much as you were thinking it was going to cost.
Or it could.
Well, I think that's what we're trying to clarify right now. Uh, I mean, I totally understand that if it's a twenty thousand dollar survey, why you would come here tonight to, to ask for a waiver. But if it's just a recording fee, that's just a recording fee of a document, right?
I believe that's all it will be.
That's.
They already have the legal description, we would just reference the legal descriptions and indicate that it was merged by a lotline adjustment in the past.
Right.
They're considered a single lot.
So that would probably equivalent to like your hourly rate of just, you know, one hour.
I could totally be wrong though.
Oh, you could.
I just know that that's the way we always do mergers is by a piece of paper. But I know in, in the city of Larkspur, so if there's some, for some reason, um, I would, I would say that if for some reason we couldn't do it for that simple, um, you could either say the condition could be removed or, or we could return to, like, without a public hearing, just to amend that condition? Just to put it on an agenda?
Excuse me, the reason I'm skeptical of what you're saying is because we already approached the civil engineer, very reputable civil engineer who does this all the time. And that was what they, uh, came up with. They didn't say that it would.
They may not have known that it was already approved.
Yeah, I, I would think that their quote for twenty thousand dollars would be to prepare a new survey, new legal description and, and all of that. But we, I think our position is we already have that and it should just be a, I don't know what the county's fee is per page, but pretty minimal of recording of those previously prepared documents.
Who needs to talk to the county to see what the county would accept? Because it's really up, i- is it up to, is, is it up to you as staff to accept that or is it up to the county?
It would.
To make the determination?
I have documents that the county has accepted in the past. Um, my, the only thing I just would like to verify is that there's no, because the city has different process, has different code requirements for merger, that it, that the process we're taking doesn't, we don't have to go through the more complicated process, which, um.
I, I think if, if, um, first of all, I don't think we want to be establishing substandard lots. And, um, so, uh, if there's a way to make this happen, that doesn't, basically, you, a survey doesn't cost twenty thousand dollars. Um, so, uh, I think it's worth finding out. If, if you find out it costs a lot, bring it back and, and we can talk about it. But I would rather not have a substandard lot, um, established because of, uh, you know, some sort of error that happened along the way.
Just so I understand it, so to be able to establish a lotline adjustment, this has to be recorded with the county record, the county recorder's office?
What I would, what I would propose doing that we could run by the city attorney is just to do a notice of merger. And it would just be based on the approval of the lotline adjustment in the past, those lots and the approval of this, uh, application, that the lots are considered merged in just a single site. And we have the legal descriptions for the lot, we don't need any survey.
Okay. Because it sounds to me that the person that would be telling you what you needed to do would, rather than a civil engineer, would be either an attorney or the county itself as to what they would accept. Am I, am I stating that correctly? Right?
Right, I mean, that's what I would think.
Yeah.
Not to say that surveyors don't know what they're doing, because they do, but it may be, if they were starting from the beginning, trying to do a merger, we might be requiring more documents than for this particular case.
So, uh, are you in the possession of certain documents that we don't have?
The, just the original approval of the lotline adjustment. And we have a title report that indicates the legal descriptions for the two lots, which is all we need. And the, the, the maps were attached to the staff report, uh, the prior approval of the lotline adjustment.
It, it seems like it's worth exploring if we can get this done without you incurring this fee, which, which I fully understand, but if, and it sound like this is a requirement from staff. We, it sounds like we would like to support that. Um, and see if we can get this done the way that staff just described. I'm hearing the hesitation in your voice, so tell me what else is concerning you.
Um, I just don't know, uh, what the benefit be, would be of doing this. This, they've owned this property for, for, uh, this amount of time and what would be the point of, uh, going through this process? I mean, if the process can be done easily, sure, why not? But, uh, on top of everything else, to incur a huge expense seems to me a little, uh, over the top.
Right, I mean, I think what my fellow commissioner was trying to explain was we don't want to set a precedent of having a lot that's, that sits there without a piece of property on it. Especially we're in, we're in this day right now where we have the state is trying to force us to build so many units, as, as many as we can in, in Larkspur. So we're under a lot of pressure. So if we allow a lot that's out there that doesn't have a, a, a property on it and we sort of approve that, that sets about a poor precedent. So we don't really want to be in a situation like that and, and from, from the city perspective.
I see.
Uh, would you like to add something?
I mean, no, not much. It's just been a confusing process.
I can see.
County, um, and asked about this to, to get them merged. And it, it, it's just been very confusing because as you can see, it's not a typical kind of. So my concern is I'm not sure what to do when we leave here. I don't know what's.
I would, I would, um, I could just prepare the draft document. We could get it notarized and just submit it and see if that takes care of the issue. Because they'll, they'll return it if there's some problem.
Okay, and then the county was saying something about some tax implications or?
Usually would, well, in some circumstances, it reduces your taxes. You might be paying twice for certain fees, like library fees and other things that are paid per parcel.
Okay, but that's it, that, that's fine. They were saying this, okay, well, it's that simple, that's great, but.
Can, can we, well, I mean, what do we do now? And this is something we can just send back to the zoning administrator to handle because it doesn't need commission?
You could approve the project with that condition, so it's, it's up for you to approve and then it doesn't have to return to the zoning administrator. Um, I guess you could authorize the zoning administrator to remove that condition since we're authorized to approve the project if we.
Well, I'm just want to set it up so that you can explore, because I'm, I don't know what, you may look into this and there may be a hiccup, right?
Yeah, I mean, we could bring it back to you like on a consent agenda or just a hearing without having to do a big public notice. That wouldn't be a problem if you want to just talk about it one more time.
I think that's a good idea, bring it back on consent.
If there's some, or if there's some problem with, if there's, if they can't comply with the condition, we could bring it back so you could reconsider it.
That's what I'm thinking, because given it has been, I mean, you're not going to come here today unless you've done some research and you've looked into this and it has, sounds like it has been confusing. So I want to make sure we've covered every option to allow you to move forward with the project. So, um, so where are we landing then?
I guess another thing that might help is if you required it prior to project final and that way it gives them more time to deal with it. So they could start their project and that would be held up. By the meantime, we could record it and see what happens.
But it's subject to the condition then?
Right, so they wouldn't be able to get a final on their project until they've recorded it, but that gives them more time. And then they could return to you if there was a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's okay because the project itself really has nothing to do with this substandard lot. It's, we're, you know, they can build the project, but they won't be able to find all the permit until either we waive the condition or, or it's fixed, right? So the issue doesn't matter for the rest of the project, so I think that's okay.
So would that be better or for it to come back on consent if there's an issue?
Well, that just gives them more time to come back on consent if there is an issue.
Okay, I see, right.
Then we're not holding up like the closet and laundry room?
Okay, does that sound acceptable? Okay, uh, yep.
So just as far as I'm clear, is there something I need to do after?
Yes, you need to work with.
Yeah, well, I'll be in touch. I think we're going to see if we can prepare the documents we need to prepare. We'll probably have to bring him in to notarize the signature and then we'll ship it to the county and see what they say about it.
And, and there will be a recording fee.
That's fine.
But I, I think we're talking about hundreds of dollars as opposed to thousands, right? Maybe tens.
There is some, some tax that they put on all recorded documents, so it's, may not be super cheap, but, well, we could find out that cost.
Okay.
It's not going to be twenty thousand, I don't think it's, I don't think it's even a thousand, but it might be seven hundred.
Yeah, something is, is, I, my understanding it would be in the hundreds, but again, it's, that's going to be better than the big one, yeah. Right. You're welcome. So do we need, we need to make a motion, right? Who wants to tackle that?
Okay, um, I'll give it a try here.
Okay.
Um, I would move approval of, um, let's see, project, uh, number twenty-three thirty-nine, um, subject to, um. How, how do we word that, subject?
The condition's already there, right?
Yeah.
It's the conditions and that we, I don't know.
I guess modify the condition to allow the lot merger to be recorded prior to project final.
Okay, that's good, yeah.
Include the condition to officially merge the two lots. Prior to.
Prior to closeout.
Yeah. But it's a modi- modification of that one condition. Right. And I, I don't know what, what condition number it was. Oh, number nine, oh, condition.
Condition number nine, yes.
So just to, do you want to repeat that again? So it's the motion to approve subject to the modification of condition number nine to?
Yeah.
I'm not supposed to allow this.
Lot merger to be recorded prior to project final.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And we'll have the vote.
Commissioner Hull?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
So the motion carries for zero with Commissioner Swisher absent. And there is a ten-day peer, peer, appeal period where you or anyone in the public could appeal the decision to the city council by filing a fee in the form with the city clerk.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll close the public portion of our meeting tonight and, um, we'll move on to business items. Uh, we need to approve the minutes of May twenty-eighth.
With my edit.
With one edit.
We've, oh, with, yeah, correct, she, uh, her name is misspelled on numerous occasions, I apologize.
I'm Jethro Toll, I don't know. Um, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes with the correction of my name.
I'll second.
And can we just all say yes to this or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Alright, thank you. Um, any planning commissioners' reports? Are we all here on July nine?
Yes, we may not have any items for that meeting, so I'll probably let you know by tomorrow. Um, it's, we won't, if we don't get the, we, I'm not expecting to get those housing, there, the deadline for the comments on the housing element on the, is Monday, the first. So even if I got them this week, it's not a lot of time for us to give any public notice. So, um, and we don't have any planning items that are ready. So I'd just like, leave it open tomorrow, just in case something, like an emergency comes in. We have a pump station project that may need designer view. That's the only project that I have lined up.
And, and that will actually come for designer view?
Possibly not, that's, I'm waiting to hear from the city attorney as to whether or not it even needs any review.
So maybe we talk about Heather Gardens.
That's what I was wondering.
You know, the, I mean, I, I kind of make sense if we're going, if with the, the front lot.
We still need to, yeah, we still want to notify people on that neighborhood, which doesn't live a lot of time. Because the notices would have to go out tomorrow.
Oh.
I mean, you could talk about it as a discussion item without, just a discussion.
Is that something we want to look into?
I put it down as a note that I thought it was something we should, because I was wondering about that when I was talking about all the properties being, you know, kind of like that. I was like, why isn't that already grandfathered in?
Yeah, I think that's.
But do we want, just a meeting for that?
Not necessarily, but it sounds like you may not have time.
If we have the pump house, we'll put those two on.
Okay. I, I guess what we're saying is that is worth looking into. I know you've suggested a couple of things, so that you could, that we've already made changes on, like the gym language. But this is something else we could look at as well, so thank you.
And I'm guilty relative to looking at FARs for, uh, other communities. Because, you know, the lots in Heather Gardens, for instance, are, or anywhere from thirty-six hundred square feet to six thousand square feet. So when you get a point four FAR on a lot that's that small. So when you get a point four F A R on a lot that's that small, you can't build a house without a variance every time. So in other communities, like, for instance, Corder Madera, as the lot size goes down, the F A R goes up. And it seems like a logical thing to do to me, but and it's happening anyway. And maybe our way, I've always thought that maybe our way of of being able to do it as designer view gives you more options to have some control, but I don't know.
Are there really lots that are that small, thirty six hundred in?
My lot is forty eight hundred square feet. So and I have a nineteen hundred square foot house on it back when we could do that.
Anything else to for this from the commissioners?
I had one other one, and I emailed it to Elise. Just wondering about, you know, is, what's the protocol? Like, you know, like in the case of three hundred Alexander going to appeal to the city council, you know, is that something that it's would be good for us to be notified about, or do we care? Do we, you know, or is it just we move on? Because I had quite a few city council members tell me about it afterwards, and I was like, oh, okay, I didn't.
Yeah, we should, we'll let you know. I don't.
Yeah.
Just didn't even really. Meeting in there, right? Because I feel like you've notified us before.
I got I got their agenda. I don't know whether that's because I'm on other committees.
So what's your question then?
Like, we should, we could notify you when there's an appeal of a.
I think that that would be nice. Yeah.
Yeah, we're just trying to remember to do it when we receive one.
Oh, I see. Right, okay, because I think I'd heard that there was the appeal, so maybe you did tell us, but.
Or when we sent out the notice, we could.
I saw the notice.
Yeah. It's interesting, because I mean, I haven't listened in. I've actually called in and listened in when they've appealed it to see how the city council handle it, which is interesting. And we can also.
And the neighboring home was on fire. I don't know if you knew that that was the house.
I saw the smoke.
Yeah.
Heard about that.
Yeah.
Recently?
Yeah, like a week and a half ago.
To the left that had the big door that the fence was moved around.
Is it really damaged?
Damaged?
It's damaged badly, but it's still there.
What caused the fire?
I think they believed it was like rags that spontaneously combusted, that people need to put the rag with water.
Came down.
Right.
Wow.
And then we had another fire in Spyglass, too.
Oh, yes. Yeah, that one, that one kept coming back up, like, it seemed like every time I looked at it, I'd be like, oh, it's it's on fire again.
Yeah. Yes.
I really want, wanted to ask those people about fire insurance on, you know, up on, on that hill.
I wish you had.
Because, you know, the one we approved evidently on Ardmore, a long time, it's huge. It was a Barbara Chambers' house. It was the architect. They put in three and a half million dollars and can't get fire insurance. So fire insurance is a real issue right now.
Yeah. Maybe you can ask them when you're. No, I'm just, I'll be interesting to know. Anything else?
Nope.
Nothing for me. In that case, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
All those in favor?
I second it.
Hi. All right, thank you very much.